It is 5 o'clock and thank you all for coming out to tonight's council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Councilmember Adams is on Zoom. Please make sure you turn off your cell phones, put them on silent. If you have a phone call, please take it outside. We will now have the invocation by Mr. Don Smith and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Cobb.
Lord, thank you for all you do for us. We owe you so much. Lord, as we get older, we can look back on our lives and see all the good things and some of the not-so-good things that we have done. We are constantly changing. While we are constantly changing, there is one thing that does not change. That is the love Jesus Christ gives us. He is always there for us to help us. As we go about our worldly tasks, we need to live the type of life that Jesus would want us to live. Let us treat each other like Jesus treats us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Councilwoman Cobb. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Solomon?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'll second that.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Is that a yes for you? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, presentations.
PR 24017, Presentation of a Recognition Certificate to Employees Who Provided Assistance During the City of Temple Storms.
Once again, it is Dean an honor and a pleasure to stand before you. Before we get started, I would like to just recognize Temple Mayor Davis, Tim Davis, and City Manager Brian Myers from Temple, Mayor Pro Tem Roxanne Stryker, and City Manager Dennis Baldwin from Morgan Point Resort. Give them a round of applause. So tonight I come before you to present some certificates and awards to individuals that have gone beyond to serve our community cities. It takes a lot of time and dedication to put service above self, and they are the exemplary example for all of us to follow. We should help each other. We should treat each other with respect and with love. And we would like to, the City Council, the City Manager and staff, to recognize them and honor them, Public Works Department, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, for going beyond to represent Team Colleen and to help our Temple and also Morgan Point Resort. So please give them a round of applause as we start the ceremony. Thank you all for the standing ovation because they deserve it. They helped out in the disaster recovery. And they went over, we were at an event, Chief Lopez and I, along with his leadership, when the tornado hit on the near Fort Cabasos and then Temple, Morgan Point, and other areas. And they did not hesitate to get out in front to help our neighboring cities. And they stayed 2, 3:00 in the morning on the recovery to ensure that every life was accounted for, and that is a blessing. And we want to truly honor them. And when you see them, just say thank you for a job well done. Chief Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to City Council for recognizing the outstanding work all our City of Colleen employees do on a daily basis, but specifically on May 23rd. On May 23rd, like the mayor said, we were at the senior center celebrating a citizens' police academy. And actually, we had a shelter in place for about 45 minutes while the storm passed through us. God spared Colleen, but unfortunately it hit our sister city in Temple. So when, soon as I found out that Temple was hit real hard, I immediately reached out to Chief Reynolds and offered our assistance. Our command staff immediately convened, and in about 20 minutes, we had about 20 officers heading out to the city of Temple to assist with their disaster efforts. I tried to wake up the police, I mean, the Fire Department, I think they were asleep, but they finally showed up. No, but seriously, you know, anytime we have a tragedy, tragedy in our area, a disaster, you know, we all have to come together and pull our resources to help each other out. And that's what, exactly what we did in Temple. We had over 60 officers over a seven-day period staying guard and helped Temple recover through the efforts, and we'd be happy to do it again. And I want to take a minute to call out and recognize some of the officers.
Counsel, will you come down and stand right here and shake their hand? Mr. Cave, please come down. They deserve that. Please come down.
Like I said, we had over 60 employees go out to Temple even despite having damages to their own houses, because a lot of our officers live in Temple and the communities near Colleen. So despite all the damage that they had to their houses, they displayed their selfless service, their servant heart, and they went out to the temple to help out. I'd like to call out Sergeant Zachary Byss. Officer Evan Kraus. Officer James Jones. Detective Linda Leach. Officer Brandon Reeves. Officer Walbert Sinabia. Officer Kenneth Sierra. Detective Van Vulcan, Van Vulcanberg. Detective Wooton. And Officer Yost.
Thank you, sir. Job well done.
Good evening, everybody. And to echo the words of Chief Lopez, very proud of the men and women of the City of Colleen. And who would have known three and a half years ago, when one of my friends and mentors pulled out this one phrase that sticks with me forever, "One team, one fight," we thought, oh, that's a, that's a good phrase for what we do here in the City of Colleen, but we never thought that it was going to spread out to the rest of Bell County. And that our one team came into one fight with the rest of Bell County for our neighbors over at Morgan's Point and the City of Temple. We truly are one team, one fight for the entire county, not just the City of Colleen, and we're very proud of that. Very proud of the men and women. And I know what our firefighters are going to say is, we were on duty, we did what we were called to do, we were just doing our job. But they didn't know that day that they were going to be called to rescue people, to see the devastation, and that weighs on them as well. What I also do know is that our firefighters were seen zipping past the donut shop, past the cops who stopped before they got to Temple. Love you, Chief Lopez. And so for the service to our citizens, there were a total of 15 Colleen firefighters and emergency management staff that responded to either Morgan's Point or Temple. Here tonight with us, Fire Rescue Officer Dustin Bennett. Captain Christopher Cave. Fire Rescue Officer Nathan Houston. Fire Rescue Officer Bradley, Bradley Koenig. Fire Rescue Officer James Puckett. Fire Rescue Officer Trevor Shannon. Interim Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, Joe Stewart. Fire Rescue Officer Brandon Zidler. Congratulations. And I'll turn the microphone over to Director of Public Works, Jeff Reynolds.
Yeah, on May 23rd, Chief Lopez got the call, and he called, called me immediately and told me that what the situation was in Temple. They were going to need some help down there. I called Mr. Christopher Knoll, who was the division leader for Mowing and Drainage, and immediately he called his team in that night, prepped everything for the next day. They worked until 1:00 that morning, getting everything prepped so the next morning, first light, they can move out to Temple. Because police and fire was reported down there, but couldn't get through the streets without Public Works. They were just down there hanging out. So we went out there and cut up some trees, moved stuff out of the way, and gave them a path to go help people out. But on a serious note, we all came together. It is one team, one fight. That's who we are, that's how we represent for the City of Colleen, and we were more than happy to reach out and help our sister city in Temple. So without further ado, I want to recognize my team, Mr. Christopher Knoll. This is, this is really the brainchild behind the efforts down there for Public Works. Mr. Chris Knoll went out there and made it happen for us. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vincent Cruz. Mr. Sean Dunn. Mr. Christopher Froje. Mr. William Towns, better known as Rock. Come on in, Rock. And last, but certainly not least, supervisor from over there, Mr. Justin Waddington. This team did this without losing any service here in Colleen. We maintained support across all departments, so it was a phenomenal job across the board. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, Chief Kobinski, and also Chief Lopez. Please give them another round of applause. Thank you, counsel. So it is truly an honor. I mean, Team Colleen is what I believe in. And before I close the ceremony, we have, the City Manager of Temple would like to give some remarks, Mrs. Myers. And is there anyone from Morgan Point? Okay, okay.
Mayor, do you want me to address the council or this way? This way, okay. So, good evening. My name is Bryn Myers, and I have the pleasure of serving as a City Manager for the City of Temple. I want to take a moment today to extend my truly heartfelt gratitude to the incredible staff of the City of Colleen for your unwavering support and assistance to the City of Temple in the aftermath of our recent tornadoes. When our community faced such a devastating event, Colleen's prompt and comprehensive response truly made a world of difference. The police, Public Works, and fire support from Colleen worked tirelessly alongside our teams, demonstrating a level of dedication and commitment that went above and beyond the call of duty. Their immediate and sustained presence provided not only essential services, but also a sense of security and solidarity that deeply, that was deeply felt by all of the staff at the City of Temple. On a personal note, Colleen holds a special place in my heart. It is my hometown, where my passion for local government was kindled through my service on the Youth Advisory Commission here. My father also served on the City Council when I was a teenager, and it was through his service and my experiences here that I came to appreciate the role of, the vital role that local government plays in our communities. And I think that is on, is no, no more witness than in an event like we experienced in May with those horrible storms and the very severe weather and the response that came immediately from Temple crews and Colleen crews and other neighbors to help our citizens is what local government and our, our local government is all about. Seeing Colleen crews in my own neighborhood, rolling up their sleeves and tackling the massive task of sawing trees and clearing debris was both heartening and inspiring. Their actions were not just a fulfillment of duty, but a genuine act of neighborliness and compassion. They saw what needed to be done and did it without hesitation, which I think embodies the true spirit of community service. Every person that I've spoken to on our team who worked with a Colleen staff member has been overwhelmingly complimentary of Colleen's response. The collaborative effort and the seamless integration of their teams with ours highlight the strength and resilience that comes from our neighboring communities standing together in time of need. To all of the Colleen staff who contributed their time, energy, and expertise, and to the Colleen mayor and City Council and administration, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Your hard work and dedication have left an indelible mark on our community, and we are profoundly grateful for your support. I hope that we never have to repay the debt, but know that we are here and stand ready to help you in the same way that you helped us. Thank you very much. It was, it was very meaningful.
Thank you so much for your kind words. Mrs. Stryker?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I too, we're from the, I'm from the City of Morgan's Point Resort. We're less than 5,000 people, and every street was covered with trees. And to see this team come in and take care of their little sister was just really overwhelming because it was so overwhelming. And we're still cleaning up every day, as you know, but it was such an encouragement to us. And I want to thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for every one of you who came and helped us out. I also, many of you may know our new City Manager, whose name is Dennis Baldwin. And I just want to thank you for spending 35 years and training him well so he could come and work for us. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Once again, thank you all for your service and your commitment to the community. And we are here to support our sister cities. And for Team Colleen and the leadership, we are truly blessed and fortunate to have you on our team. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to make one more statement before we close. The individuals that were behind putting the certificates together, the corn, setting up the program, hey, Mr. Olson from Temple, hey, how are you? He was at Colleen night, he done ran away, but we still love you. Mayor Davis, are you still here? Are you? Oh, hey, Mayor Davis. Sir, would you like to say anything before we close? Yes, sir. But while he's, come on up, sir. While he's coming up, Cece, would you please come here? Cece and Sheila were behind putting all the certificates together, the programs and the corn. So let's give her and Sheila, she's not here, a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you so much for taking care of Team Colleen. Mayor Davis?
Thank you. I apologize for being a little bit late. I got caught up in that I-14 traffic jam, as we always have. You know, on behalf of the residents of Temple, I want to thank the City of Colleen, your public service folks, your Public Works folks, and also thank you for preparing them to come help us. I know, you know, every budget that comes around, and it's important that, that we were able to, to equip and supply our people, but it was, I always tell our public service people, and I want to do the same with, with the public service folks with the City of Colleen, it's amazing to me that there are a group of people that are willing to always stand in the gap, to be prepared at a moment's notice to come help. And that's what, that's what your folks do. That's what your folks did. So we needed help. We would have eventually got it all done, right? But we needed help in that moment, and the City of Colleen and other cities just showed up. You didn't have to be called, you didn't have to be asked, you just showed up. And, and for that, I am, I'm just so grateful. And, and it's been said before, the, the City of Temple, both administration, our public service people, but also our residents, who may not have even known you were there, but you helped. And again, that just means so much to me. And so thank you for preparing your city to help.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. We will now get into our citizen comments. Bless you. Leo Gukeisen, good afternoon, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, City Manager, and of course, residents of Colleen. First, I would like to say a personal thank you to the men and women of the Colleen Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works for their activities in helping out Colleen. From my entire family to them, I, we do appreciate that, and thank you. Getting on with what I'm up here for. Start off with my quote of the day. "You shall reap what you sow," by Martin Luther King Jr., Washington, D.C., 1965. I'm basically here to talk about the possible change to the City Council's workshop meetings that is being proposed today. I am against that. Over the years that I have been here, the governing standards seem to be a beacon of fairness for the, for council and for the residents, but it's kind of fell a little to the left, way more left than I, than I agree with. One thing was the passing of Prop A, which was known as the, as a violation of both state and federal law. Because of that, the residents is paying for two court cases, not because of the law, but because it's an ego issue. Secondly, this body has infringed on its residents' federal and state constitutional rights to bear arms. This dragonian measure was, again, not based on fact or a problem, but because of a single comment made on one particular day. Thirdly, this body has infringed on its, the residents' First Amendment rights of free speech to address their elected officials in a public forum. This measure was put in place not because of the conduct of residents, but because the fact that the body wanted to silence the people. This measure was approved mainly on a comment made, knowing that it was elected, election season, people will be more attacking. Now, now you wanted to infringe on the residents' ability to address this body by going from two workshops and two meetings a month to just two meetings a month. This body justifies this how? By saving, by saying it will give the body and staff more time. Well, what about the residents? You say you are for them, but you just cut their time down on which they can present their case in front of you. So when this body stated that a couple of years ago regarding the pay raise, that the pay raise was because of the two workshops, two meetings a month, then if you're willing to restrict the people's right, then will this body place a charter amendment on the November ballot to reduce your pay for the basis of what you're saying? I really am not holding my breath on that. But cutting from four to two... I guarantee you that. Also in response to this, that might answer the question why there's two recall petitions that have been submitted in the last couple of days. I'm not behind it, but you can be damn sure that I'm going to get behind it, and I'm going to chase you with paper, I'm going to wound you at the loss, and we're going to wind up, and I say this figuratively, chief, we're going to kill you with your own money.
CJ Gressom, you have four minutes.
First of all, I'm glad my mayor's here because there's at least one fewer tyrant mayor in attendance. In a society under the forms of which the stronger faction can readily unite and oppress the weaker, anarchy may, as truly be said, to reign. James Madison once wrote of the, quote, "Great importance in a republic, not only to guard the society against the oppression of its rulers, but to guard one part of the society against the injustice of the other part." Madison went to great lengths to highlight the tyranny of the majority in the Federalist Papers, Number 51, and this is about RS 24116. I'm going to get there. I'm laying my predicate. He understood that, quote, "Different interests necessarily exist in different classes of citizen. If a majority be united by a common interest, the rights of the minority will be insecure." The original text of the First Amendment to the Constitution, as drafted by Mr. Madison, read, "The people shall not be deprived or abridged of their right to speak, to write, or to publish their sentiments." This was shortened by the special committee drafting the amendments for submission to the delegates, but highlights the freedom of speech includes the protection from the abridgement of it. Yet despite these admonitions against infringing upon the right to speak freely, President John Adams, who was president of these debates, passed the Sedition Act. The Sedition Act criminalized anyone who would, quote, "Write, print, utter, or publish any false, scandalous, or malicious writing or writings against the government of the United States, or either House of the Congress of the United States, or the President of the United States with the intent to defame the said government, or said House of the said Congress, or said President, or to bring them or any of them into contempt or disrepute." Those poor government officials, having people say bad things about them, the horror they must have gone through. The Act was used to suppress speech critical of the Adams administration. Now, while the Act was allowed to expire in 1800, the Supreme Court noted it likely would have been ruled unconstitutional. While you guys are trying to come down to just twice a week, I don't have any problems with that. I mean, that's how we do it in Temple. The problem is, y'all have a history of clamping down on the First Amendment. You know, you started with just these so-called rules of decorum or whatever, and then you decided, oh, stay on topic. We're going to get, you can't, we're not going to let you talk about anything but what we want you to talk about. We are your masters in this temple of government. We, upon our high chairs of office up here, standing before you elevated below you lowly citizens. So then what did you do? You, you know, people were trying to talk during agenda items. So now you're trying to make it even less. You have just been presented, at least your city secretary has, with the lawsuit that I promised you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim Cobb, Mr. Cagle. Not looking at me now, are you? You thought it was all talk when you wouldn't let us talk. Now that talk is in writing. You've been served.
Mr. Price, you have four minutes.
Good evening, City Council. So I'm going to rise under, underneath several sections here, just so we're clear on how I'm going to present myself and present my readings here. It's under, in accordance with Section 551.042, Section 551.001, Chapter 4, Section B, and Section 551.007. So I also rise to make an amendment to next week's agenda to put on several items. One is that we bifurcate the screen so that y'all are visualized as well as the person speaking on the lecture underneath the video. That's one proposal. The other proposal is to amend several ordinances. One is the city manager's pay, to reduce it to one for one dollar to the population as registered voters, to equal that dollar. One person registered, one dollar for that person, for the city manager, with a base pay of $50,000 and a max pay with benefits not to exceed $150,000. That's on average with Texas standard payment for most city managers, even though that we're one of the highest in the nation for city manager's pay. Outside of that, total money spending, right, for all the items, for every single item, I spoke of this last, last meeting, if you count everything up that we're going to spend, whether it's federal dollars, grant dollars, or anything like that, we're spending $23 million. That's the total, when you total everything up. Now, some of it's, you know, like I said, federal grants and things like this. But I have a question with the Skylark Field. We're going to spend 2.7, we already spent $2.7 million for the tower. How many people we got flying in there? What's, what's, how many planes and passengers are going in and out of Skylark Field? I'm just curious, you know, because I don't see anybody coming in and out there as passengers. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see it happening. As a hobby field, that's a lot of money to be spending on a, on a tower that might see one FESNA a week? Just kind of curious about that. Not only that, $99,000 for water irrigation at the golf course that only 1%, 1% to 3% of the population actually utilize? RS 2414, what are the perpetuity requirements in that, in that request there? I also rise to suggest that we add to next week's agenda, an amendment to RS 24116, that we add town hall meetings, right, on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. If we're going to cut, cut everything back, then let's just add town hall meetings so we can actually speak and have a voice and utilize the First Amendment and actually tell you things, you know, bring things forward, just open air, you know, just like you had Under the CDBG funds, right, we're using $265,000 to just administer that whole program? Not only that, the We Care Incorporated, we're paying $168,000 for. I mean, who's getting that $168,000? I don't, you know, it doesn't say, doesn't tell me who or where it's going to. It's just administration fees. I'm like, it's a lot of money for administrating something that is nothing to me because there's, doesn't explain anything in the thing. And code enforcement, did they start getting paid $30 an hour? That's, because I thought that it was on the thing for $13 an hour on the city website, but now they're getting $30 an hour. So I'm kind of a little confused with that.
Mr. Price, your time is up. Thank you. Melissa Brown.
So the 35 seconds that's on there right now is not mine?
No, sir, it's over.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I just see the 35 seconds on there. I assume it's mine.
Thank you, Mr. Price. You have four minutes.
Can I go under the assumption I get an extra 45 seconds? No? Okay. And talk to you about your governing standards? That's it, you're going to four minutes, governing standards. While I think it was admirable for the council to change up the way that they appoint council members to boards and committees, I think that we have seen what a mess that has become. For the past two years, there's been at least one council member who has sat on zero boards or committees, one council member who has sat on six or seven boards or committees, and others that take their first committee or two that they highly prefer pass on everything else. And then you have some council members who don't even get the respect of being able to be here to pick their committees that they're on. And this is ridiculous. If you're going to do it this way, then everybody should have to take their turn until all of the committees are appointed, and every council member should be present in order to do this. Okay. According to the presentation, there are only two changes to your governing standards. The problem is, there are not only two changes to your governing standards. So, agenda format, you go through one through six. Is everything up until you get staff presentation? Number seven is your work session, where you get the presentations from staff, and you discuss items on the regular agenda. The regular session, this is where the items are included that the council will vote on and take action, and then citizen comments, followed a long way down the way by public hearings. Now, the regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays starting at 3:00 unless the meeting is rescheduled or canceled, and it will include a work session to discuss all of the agenda items. This is going to become important in just a moment. The work session is a meeting to discuss or explore matters of interest to the city. Work session meetings, again, is to discuss regular meetings. You will discuss items before they come up to the meeting portion of your meeting. So if we go ahead and we look at what meeting is defined as in the Texas Open Meetings Act, it is "A deliberation between a quorum of a governmental body during which public business or public policy or over which governmental body has supervision or control is discussed." If you are going to comment and have discussion and presentations on any of those items prior to the citizen comments, you are violating the law. Don't take my word for it. Go ahead and check the Attorney General under their text of the Open Meeting Act where it specifically says that. Also, if you are going to have people by video conference, as we do today, then it must specify the location of the meeting where the quorum is, but your agenda also has to specify you have council members on video conference. You also have to allow the opportunity for citizens to participate via video conference also. Go ahead, check it all out. Fact-check me on this one. Each portion of a meeting held by video conference is required to be open to the public, shall be visible and audible to the public at the locations. On one of these three screens, the entire public should be able to see Councilman Adams right now and hear him. His mute should not be, I'm sorry, his mic should not be muted. But let's go a little bit further and just let you know that Austin just lost a federal case where two federal judges told them that at a very minimum, in order to comply with state law, they have to allow each and every single citizen a minimum of three minutes per agenda item to speak. And it's not after you've already had the discussion, it's either prior to the discussion or during the item, and then again when you are considering it. To do this, you're not only violating our rights, you are violating the law, and I would carefully advise each and every single one of you to really take notice of that, take, pay attention to the law. I, I, by my calculation, at 40 seconds, because you gave it to Mr. Price, or did he just speak? Did he, did he speak kindly enough to you?
You are the next speaker. Please come up. Thank you.
Did he speak kindly enough, and is that why I don't get my extra 45 seconds?
Please take your seat.
I got 30 more seconds. But in order to, you're not the mayor, you're not the mayor or the Pro-Tim or the police officer.
Melissa Brown, you interrupt the meeting. Melissa Brown, you are interrupting the meeting.
I'm not. He called me out.
Cameron Cochran, you can speak. Cameron Cochran, you can speak. Melissa Brown, your time is up. Okay.
He actually just yielded time.
Please take your seat. Counsel, we're taking a five-minute break.
Please do. And then check your governing standards.
Mr. Cameron Cochran, I have not called on you yet. Please sit down now, or you can leave. I apologize for that. You have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm speaking on the governing standards and the discussion to change the meeting time and the frequency of meetings. While on the surface, it appears that you're doing this to make the meetings more efficient, that argument doesn't hold well, and it's only because of the history of this council. This council has a history of silencing critics, and it started, for example, with citizen petitions. Last November, we had a citizen who filed a citizen petition to remove the city manager. The very next council meeting, the council voted to remove citizen petitions. That right there tells you something. Then in December, we did have non-agenda items for all citizens at first, and then a week later, it changed from only citizens living in Colleen. Then the mayor stated to the newspaper that she will make sure that the council will address those handful of people that only come up here to complain. And sure enough,
or during the item, and then again when you are considering it. To do this, you're not only violating our rights, you are violating the law, and I would carefully advise each and every single one of you to really take notice of that.
Thank you, your time is up.
Pay attention to the law.
Cam and Cochran.
Because you gave it to Mr. Price. Or did he just speak? Did he, did he speak kindly enough to you?
You are the next speaker. Please come up.
Did he speak kindly enough? And is that why I don't get my extra 45 seconds?
Please take your seat.
I got 30 more seconds. But in order to.
Your time is up.
You're not the mayor. You're not the mayor or the pro tem or the police officer.
Melissa Brown, you interrupt the meeting. Melissa Brown, you are interrupting the meeting.
I'm not, he called me out.
Cam and Cochran, you can speak. Cam and Cochran, you can speak. Melissa Brown, your time is up. Okay.
He actually just yielded time.
Please take your seat. Counsel, we're taking a five-minute break.
Please do, and then check your governing standards.
Anka Nogu, you have four minutes. Mr. Cameron Cochran, I have not called on you yet. Please sit down now, or you can leave.
I'm sitting down. Dr. Cochran, by the way. I didn't have a three in it. I'm a doctor.
First warning.
Thank you for that warning, ma'am. May I have another?
I apologize for that.
No worries.
You have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm speaking on the governing standards and the discussion to change the meeting time and the frequency of meetings. While on the surface, it appears that you're doing this to make the meetings more efficient, that argument doesn't hold well, and it's only because of the history of this council. This council has a history of silencing critics, and it started, for example, with citizen petitions. Last November, we had a citizen who filed a citizen petition to remove the city manager. The very next council meeting, the council voted to remove citizen petitions. That right there tells you something. Then, in December, we did have non-agenda items for all citizens at first, and then a week later, it changed from only citizens living in Colleen. Then, the mayor stated to the newspaper that she will make sure that the council will address those handful of people that only come up here to complain. And sure enough, in January, the council voted to remove non-agenda items for all citizens. So it's, you know, decreasing the number of people that can come up here and that are allowed to speak. It has nothing to do with being rude, and even people that are very respectful, they get shut down. I am a victim of one of that, of one of those incidents. I am against this for that reason, because this is done, it's not done to make the meetings more efficient, it's done to shut people down. If you're starting at 3 o'clock, most people will not be able to make it, and that, in effect, it just gives you more power, more control of how things are going to be run. Yeah, they'll be more efficient. You know, that's how it is under communism. I remember, I grew up under communism, we were not allowed to criticize the rulers. Everybody was in line, everybody was very orderly, it was very orderly, very peaceful. But it was communism, people were not happy. Yeah, it was orderly, but people were very unhappy. If that's what you want, we, we don't want that. We're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna accept that. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Cameron Cochran, because Cecil right here, Dr. Cameron Cochran. I would like to have my time deferred to my fellow speaker. Melissa?
Thank you. So with the extra 30 seconds that I should have been allotted.
Madam City Attorney, Councilmember Boer has a question.
We're here as a member of a group which allows.
Ma'am, ma'am, I have not addressed you yet. City, Madam City Attorney, Mr. Boer has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question because this might be a precedent. Is this permitted?
So your governing standards under public participation allow the mayor, the mayor may extend the time allocation for a designated spokesperson if the person for whom he or she speaks agrees to yield their time to the spokesperson. It is not mandatory, it's permissive.
Okay, it sounds like it's up to the mayor.
Uh, no, no, ma'am. Mr. Cochran, do you want to use your time or not?
Yes, I would, thank you.
There's no rule against this one, though. The Act actually says that we cannot.
The Act actually says they cannot.
Mr. Cochran. Mr. Cochran, Ms. Brown, would you please take your seat? Ms. Brown, would you please take your seat? That's your first one. Ms. Brown, would you please take your seat? Ms. Brown, leave the, leave the chamber now, leave the chamber. We're taking a five-minute break. I apologize to the residents, especially our visitors that is here. This does not reflect the residents of the city of Colleen, nor this council, nor the staff, this type of behavior. Mr. Cochran, please finish your time.
Again, Dr. Cochran, thank you for respecting me, as I respect you. I went to school during that degree, thank you. Let's start, to all my friends and family, Happy Gay Pride Month. We got that proclamation yet? No. I also want to say Happy Mental Health Month. You got a proclamation for that? No. Let's look at RS 21111, Golf Course Irritation Project. Irrigation, it's also irritation to me. The Stone Tree Golf Course is seeking $99,650 for a new ground storage tank to fulfill a 90-year agreement for the irrigation system. My question is, why is the city of Colleen alone paying for that when the golf course membership includes people who live in Harker Heights, Copper Cove, Nolanville, and other nearby cities? It's interesting that something happens with WCID Water, they propose a change, and all the local cities pitch in to try to fix that problem. Seems like the Colleen, who is somewhat, I don't know why they're managing the golf course, they need to get rid of it and sell it, but they're making all the payments and trying to fix it up, even though it was built back in 1970s. Also, it's important to note that Stone Tree did a presentation back in April, April 2nd, 2024, their management came up here to the city, and they said that they have a forecasted profit of $175,600. $175,000, their own money making a profit, and yes, they, yet they come to the Colleen to get $99,000. That's a profit for 2024. Again, my question, why is only the Colleen taxpayer supporting this project at Stone Tree? Why shouldn't they fund it themselves if they're making a profit at the golf course? Let's look at OR 24007, Childcare Tax Credit Exemption. No one's answered, how many registered childcare facilities operate in Colleen? Does anybody know? No one does. They're probably going to approve it without even knowing how many operate. Let's go to the next one. RS 24103, Replacement of the Municipal Court Cameras. Again, the city is willing to pay $69,551 for the replacement of these court cameras. My question is, will these new security cameras that offer technology that's improved also have the ability to edit videos in case people submit an open records act? Yes, people, you can submit an open records act and request things from your local government. For example, if you want to request body camera footage with an open records act, that city may not have the correct technology to help remove or blur license plates, faces, and unwanted radio transmissions that could compromise that video recording that will delay your open records act, making them go to the city above that, which would basically be the attorney, Attorney General, to try to release that body cam footage. Again, my curiosity question is, with this new technology that's going to cost $69,000, will it be, meet the open records act and have the ability to make changes, again, to blur people's faces, remove unwanted radio transmissions, and things like that? If the city is willing to upgrade the municipal court cameras, they're also unwilling to improve the body worn cameras for this fiscal year. Can they move that to fiscal year 2025? I believe that both the court cameras and the body worn cameras need to be in compliance with the open records act. Thank you.
Mr. Seals? You have four minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers.
Good evening, sir.
City management. I'll do my best to get through this in four minutes. It's doubtful. I've also emailed you the packet, and I printed out the packet you should have in front of you. I am speaking on behalf of numerous people. You know, the org chart that's provided, you know, the, the citizens of Colleen are at the top, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're above anyone else, but, you know, your, your role is to, to serve the citizens in their best interests and, and help make decisions on their behalf. To be clear, I am very supportive of providing the staff, council, and citizens more time to research the agenda topics. Having gone through this process recently, I cannot overstate how valuable it was to have as much time and as many speaking opportunities to present information. The proposed changes, while providing more time for staff and council, however inherently reduces time and chances for citizens. The intent may be, may have been to increase overall review time, but this structure will suppress citizens' opportunities to speak, which does not provide you the ground truth to make those informed decisions. Regardless of my finish today, I strongly urge you to table these changes till you can gain more feedback and ideas to find a compromise amongst us all. As Abraham Lincoln stated, "Nothing valuable can be lost by taking time." The next two slides show that if all things were equal and you held a council meeting on July 2nd, using the current process and the proposed process, then there's a considerable drop-off on citizen engagement. Currently, there are 50 meetings a year, 100 speaking opportunities, and citizens see an agenda 12 days prior. The proposed would reduce meetings to 24, cut speaking opportunities in half to 48, and citizens would only see the agenda eight days out. Regardless of intent, reducing citizen engagement by half is not beneficial to anyone. However, tonight is making me question that slightly. If I run out of time, please keep this in mind. I'm just one guy with three ideas, trying to find a compromise. There are many other people out there smarter than me who have other ideas. The point is, I, I ask you to table approving this tonight, and, and let's have a little bit more discussion to maybe find a way that will benefit both sides. The first course of action is probably the best idea, because it was my wife's idea. She paid me to say that. Bottom line, my recommendation is you use the working session to discuss the next council meeting, not the same day of council meeting. So what that would allow you to do is have a working session to discuss the council topics that are two weeks, or, or two weeks away, right? And then, once you get to the third council, the week of the third council meeting, you would then actually vote on the topics that you discussed at the previous meeting. COAT 2 is keep your proposed structure, but provide the agenda earlier, so we get the full 12 days, implement a super majority provision, and allow citizen comments and public hearing comments per session. Mayor Nash King, you said you didn't get all the information from the P&amp;Z during the Feather Line Hearing, and having that super majority provision would allow you to do this and, and call them to the meeting and get more understanding of why they possibly disapprove something. COAT 3 is a little radical, but my recommendation is you could bring back citizen petitions to discuss open topics, but limit it to once every third meeting. This is how, this is what Austin does. You could also implement a digital submission process, where we could provide comments digitally and have a type of read receipt once we've submitted those comments, and then you could limit the citizen comments and public hearing comments to one time. If I have one more minute, please?
You have some great information. Please continue.
This would allow, this would provide opportunity for citizens to discuss any topic, but on a, on a non-recurring basis, kind of limit that, so you can have more efficient meetings. But it also provides another opportunity for citizens to contact you, you know, digitally, you know, not just an email, but an actual kind of repository submission of, of comments that you could then introduce in workshops or, or other meetings. You know, again, the, the biggest bottom line, though, is I really do urge you to just maybe take a step back tonight, not, not approve it as is, let's try to have a little bit more conversation to, to find a good balance where, where citizens can engage you, provide that opportunity. There is a lot of us that, that respect the decorum, that want to do the right thing, and I urge you not to silence that majority because of a minority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seals. Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Boer, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to, to apologize to our citizens for kind of what you're, you're enduring on a routine basis. Truth is, our city is, is not dysfunctional, and this is a business meeting, and that's what the council is here to execute business on behalf of the city. So we do appreciate your patience and look forward to continuing business. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, madam. To the citizen, I wanted to say thank you, I appreciate this information. I just had a question, madam, regarding the original reason why this started coming up. Conversations were had before I was even on council regarding the meeting times, the ability to be able to join KISD's meetings, having the flexibility of our citizens requesting to be able to attend those meetings. That was originally my understanding as to the conflict that our citizens were having. Is that not a true statement?
Yes, ma'am, it is a true statement. This conversation has been going on at least for four years, and that, every other city is doing this too. What we're doing is not anything abnormal. It's very cost-effective. It gives parents, which should be involved with their children's lives, that's just my opinion, to go to KISD school board meetings to hear and voice their concerns there. So it's not taking away anyone's freedom of speech or the council interacting with them. It won't be anything different, it's just, we have two meetings in one night. It's not like when we do a budget meeting or any other meeting in two nights. There, it's just certain individuals do not want the shift, but the majority of the people that, and I never, ever hardly say the constituents, I don't use that, because I don't want people to think I'm hiding behind them and my true feelings, but the constituents I have spoken to say that it's a great idea because it's all on one video, and you have the opportunity to see it all later if you cannot come and attend the meeting. It won't change the amount of residents coming to the meetings, because it's still the same people coming, and we have it every, we have it every Tuesday. It, it didn't increase, but it will increase if it's a certain item. So this came about four, five, just not this council, councils prior to us was moving in this direction from what the constituents had told them.
Okay, that was my understanding. I just want to clarify. Thank you for that. The citizen, the citizen did make a very valid point, and there was something that has been asked before regarding our citizens' comments. So that, that, when the citizens send in statements, for example, or they send in an email, there's not really a format for us to be able to read those, to be able to present those, right? If they can't come to the meeting, that has come up before. It would now be an appropriate time if I did want to make a motion to table this for future discussion.
Table what?
The conversation about.
No, ma'am, we're in citizen comments right now. Yes, ma'am, and to answer your question, I can only speak for this council. Any email that we receive from our constituents, I know Councilmember Boer, Sagari, yourself, Cobb, Alvarez, and Solomon, and staff, they reply back to all the emails.
Yes, I mean, I was talking in this format as far as reading them publicly, that was the question that was asked about retaining them. But no, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. With that being said, is that, with that being said, Mr. Don Smith, sir, you have
I just want to mention about RS 24109, the agreement between the fort and the city. I think most people in this room would agree that relations between the fort and the city are extremely important. After I retired from the Army, I lived in DeRidder, Louisiana. I was an instructor at Fort Polk for 21 years, and I didn't get to go to too many of the council meetings because our hours were so long. But one thing they did that I would recommend you all consider, they had a member of the Fort Polk Garrison Staff sitting right in their city council meetings. Now, what does that do? One, it shows the public that there is good interface between the two organizations. It gives you all an exam, a, a way of asking questions that aren't at the real high level, and it allows the military people to see what the city is doing. And if we have problems between the city and the fort, what do we want to do? Basic leadership skill, solve the problem where, at the lowest level possible. So I would recommend that you add somebody off of the Fort, the Fort Cavassa Staff to your meetings, and then at the end, what they did at the Fort Polk meetings was they asked, it was normally a lieutenant colonel or a major, they asked the officer attending, is there anything you want to put out dealing with then Fort Polk? And I would just throw this out for consideration. The more coordination you can do at the lowest level does what? Saves you a lot of time, and it reduces the chance of misunderstanding between the two groups, especially if there's problems that arise. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, but we do have a three-core Garrison representative from Public Affairs Office that attends every one of our meetings on Tuesdays. He was just sitting in the back, he stepped out for a phone call, just saw the phone to his ear, but he's here representing three corps and taking back the information. And once a month at the Communities Service Council, I do speak to not only the generals, but also the brigade commanders and sergeant majors in reference to everything that Colleen is doing along with other mayors. So the information that, that's here is being spoken out there on monthly, on a monthly basis, and I also do lunch with General Benarby, and we talk about our joint partnerships and other things that's going on. and other things that's going on with Colleen. So yes, sir, that relationship, you are 100% correct, is very important.
Can I say one thing?
No, sir, I'm sorry. When you took your seat, I do apologize. Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, we have one person left, and I'm just trying to get some clarification. Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Laws signed up to speak on item RS-24-116 as a public hearing item, but it's a resolution.
Yes, ma'am. So he can speak at this time?
He has to speak, yes, correct, as citizen comments instead of public hearing. Okay. Mr. David Laws? Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Yes. The lawyer saying yes.
I'm sorry. Madam City Attorney, am I missing something?
If needed, with assistance, there can be additional time. It sounds like there's questions regarding that. Thank you.
Of course, of course. Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, counsel and mayor. My name is David Laws. I have a service dog with me whose name is Rufus, and my interpreter here is Chris. I have another one back there too, Becky. Thank you. I have three things I would like to mention tonight to talk about. The first item is that you are attempting to change the council meetings, the date, the days and the times that you are meeting, and I feel like this is an attempt to further limit comment and input from your residents, and I disagree with this. At this time, meetings are at 5:00, and the workshop is part of that. It's part of that mix. So the second thing I'd like to mention is to ask the question of why there is not live captioning of these meetings. I'm able to have that on my phone through a very basic app, so I don't understand why the city council doesn't provide that for the city of Colleen. And the third item I'd like to state is that the voters gave each of you a raise. But I feel like at this time, you're trying to work less and reduce your workload and to do it in a more hidden fashion. I'm sorry, I lost. I do believe this is a bad idea, and we need to make sure that this is accessible to everyone. I wonder what your motivation is behind that decision that's being driven here. So if you have any questions, I'm open to those. Thank you. And thank you, ma'am.
Thank, oh, no problem. Thank you. And to answer your question, Mr. Laws and any other residents, there is no hidden agenda about... No, she's... So to answer your question, Mr. Laws, there is no hidden agenda behind us going to two meetings per night twice a month. There are other cities that follow this same program of having two meetings in one night. It just make our meetings longer. It doesn't take away from our time. It's just two meetings. Rather we start at 3:00, we might end up at 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM. We still have to deal with the business of the city. It's just all going, will be done on one night, two nights per month. With that being said, Madam Secretary, any more comments from city council members concerning agenda?
MN-24-015, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of May 28, 2024. RS-24-103, consider a memorandum resolution approving an agreement for the replacement of the municipal court cameras with GTS technology solutions in an amount of $69,551. RS-24-104, consider a memorandum resolution recommending to the Employee Benefits Trust the selection of MetLife for employee dental insurance and approving contracts for vision insurance, life and disability insurance, and worksite benefits. RS-24-105, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of additional election equipment from Election Systems and Software through Texas Buy Board Cooperative Contract 71023 in the amount of $76,000. RS-24-107, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division for the administration of a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grant for the Automated Weather Observation System Relocation Project at Skylark Field. RS-24-108, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division for the administration of a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grant for the new terminal building at Skylark Field. RS-24-109, consider a memorandum resolution approving an intergovernmental support agreement for the installation support services with the U.S. Army Garrison at Fort Cavazos, Texas. RS-24-110, consider a memorandum resolution granting an appeal to waive the Parkland dedication requirements submitted by Colleen Engineering and Surveying on behalf of RSBP Incorporated and CTDC LLC for the proposed final plat of Heritage Oaks Phase 7 in accordance with Colleen Code of Ordinances, Section 26, 162. RS-24-111, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Clark Associates, PLLC for the design of the reuse water for golf course irrigation project in the amount of $99,650. RS-24-1112, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of four refuse trucks for the public work solid waste residential division in the amount of $1,784,484. RS, excuse me, RS-24-113, consider a memorandum resolution approving the issuance of a tax-exempt note by the Oglesby Cultural Facilities Corporation for Heart of Texas Goodwill Industries Incorporated and providing an effective date. RS-24-114, consider a memorandum resolution supporting the application to National Park Service for Land and Water Conservation Fund State Assistance Plus Readiness and Recreation Initiative FY24 for Westside Regional Park Phase 1 in the cost estimated amount of $8,300,000. RS-24-115, consider a memorandum resolution declaring a vacancy on the Clean Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and appointing a member to fill the unexpired term. OR-24-007, consider an ordinance adopting an exemption from ad valorem taxes for qualifying childcare facilities to apply the tax year beginning January 1, 2025. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance adopting an exemption from ad valorem taxes for qualifying childcare facilities, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I know you clicked on, but it's not showing on mine, so whoever was first, would you, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Sagara?
Mayor, I move, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. A second? Mine's not working, so...
Madam Mayor.
Okay. Oh, okay. So we have Councilmember Sagara, we have Councilmember Solomon second, the motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Councilmembers Adams, are you in favor? All right. Councilmember Boyd gone. Okay, six to zero of Councilmember Boyd not voting.
RS-24-106, consider a memorandum resolution appointing council members to various boards, commissions, and committees.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, Madam Secretary went over this last week. Would you like further, go back over it again? Can I get a motion to approve RS-24-106? Councilmember Sol...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Oh. Oh.
I know Mr. Alvarez wasn't here last week.
Correct. That's what I was...
And so, we want to give him an opportunity to make a selection. Can we see which, because I don't remember which committees are still open?
Yes, sir. I can go through the updated PowerPoint presentation. I filled in some of the selections from last week. Could you please pull up the presentation? So here's who we have on the Audit Committee. Councilmember Alvarez, would you still like to serve on the Audit Committee? Crime Solutions Committee, there is no member selected.
All right.
I can't make a phone call with your iPad. Okay. Moving on. No one signed up for the Clean Sister Cities? Is anyone interested?
I'd believe I did mention Sister Cities last week as well.
Yes, you did. Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Cobb.
And Councilmember Cobb would be serving as ex officio again?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, those committees are filled. K-Tempo, there is a vacancy. Councilmember Alvarez?
Councilmember Alvarez, are there any particular place you would like to serve on at this Okay, so K-Tempo for Councilmember Alvarez.
Okay. Moving on to the subcommittees. There's still a vacancy on the Animal Advisory Committee, if anyone's interested.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Okay.
Okay, no, he passed.
The Board of Adjustment Construction, there are two vacancies still? Okay.
And Councilmember Boyd would like to be on it too. And I'll take the crime since no one wanted. What is the crime, what?
The crime solutions?
I'll take that one.
That was also one, okay.
I'll take that one. We can move on. Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Making note. Fire Prevention Code?
Do anybody else want to serve on that? Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Solomon say he would.
For fire prevent...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Fire prevention. Would you want to serve on it?
Yeah.
Okay, you are on it. Yes, sir. All right.
So yes...
Councilmember Boyd say he would serve with them.
So Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Boyd?
Councilmember Alvarez is on the Board of Adjustment, Council, Construction, that is, and Councilmember Solomon and Boyd will be, Councilmember Boyd will be on Fire Prevention Code. And Councilmember Boyd want to be on Construction. So Councilmember Boyd is on both. Councilmember Alvarez is just on the Construction, and Councilmember Solomon is the Fire Prevention Code.
Got it.
Thank you for your patience.
There's still a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment zoning?
If no one else will, I'll do it. If, Councilmember Alvarez, you're on there already, so I sat on if no one else will.
You're, okay. There's still a vacancy for the Bell County Health District?
Councilmember Cobb, you want to serve on that one? She wants to serve on it.
Okay, and then there are still two vacancies on the Youth Advisory Commission.
Councilmember Boyd, Councilmember...
Can you speak into the mics so I can hear?
Councilmember Boyd is on there, Councilmember Sagara is on there, and Councilmember Alvarez would like to serve.
So just two, Adams and Alvarez?
No, Sagara, you said it was three vacancies or two.
There are two.
So it's Councilmember Alvarez for sure, and Councilmember Sagara and Boyd is already on there.
If I can't clarify how this, this is, what, when it says current member, those are the members we're actually replacing right now. So the same person could replace themselves, or another person could replace themselves. So that's what this means, is the current member is who is sitting currently, and the new member is who will be sitting after you vote tonight.
So that's Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Sagara, just, they're going to be on there, and Adams is already on there. That's the new member, so it's only two open, correct?
I thought you said Boyd, Sagara, and Alvarez.
Well, once I saw Adams, I came back and said Alvarez, and if I did say that, please, I apologize, but it's Boyd and Sagara, and I apologize for the confusion because Adams is already on there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Did Councilman Alvarez, you expected, excuse me, expressed a desire to serve on this board? Well, I'll yield that to him.
Did I say Alvarez? I said Alvarez and Sagara.
Yeah. That's what you said?
Okay.
Yeah.
He wanted it, but he's given it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. That was kind of you.
No problem.
And that's all.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve RS-24-106? Councilmember, oh, works. Councilmember Boyd?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No. Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Boyd, you voted, sir? Okay, thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Council, for working together on that. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
RS 24-116, consider a memorandum resolution re-adopting the governing standards and expectations as amended.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Attorney Clemens, do you have any updates for us on the slides?
Briefly, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There is one change to the slide, which is the change you made last week to start the workshop, the work session slash meeting, the combined meeting at 3:00 PM on First and Third Tuesdays, and I've got that addition here. And then I also wanted to mention that we already have public hearings scheduled for July 2nd, July 9th council sessions, and so we wanted to recommend that these changes, if you do vote on them tonight, not begin until, be effective July 16th.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that.
And in addition to some of the comments and questions earlier regarding citizen comments and the placement on this agenda, I wanted to note that the Open Meetings Act does require and allow the public comment on agenda items before or during consideration of an item, and so your council's consideration of the item would be during the regular work session, not, I mean, during the regular session, not during the work session. So the citizen comments, as proposed, would be before that, after work session, but before the regular session, before the actual consideration and vote was on the matter, would be in compliance with the act. You could put citizen comments at the very beginning. The idea here was to address questions. Sometimes questions come up, and those questions can be answered during the work session, and then the comments could be informed by the work session.
Thank you, and I have some, a question, and I don't know if you have the answer for it. There was a lot of things that were spoken tonight that I felt was incorrect about the law. Are we violating any laws with having, going to having our meetings twice a month?
No. There is no requirement that you have a separate work session meeting, you have four meetings in length. The proposal does not violate the Open Meetings Act or any other law.
All right, thank you. So we have Councilmember Boyd, Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Boyd?
I shouldn't have had my button pressed.
Okay, Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to re-adopt, make a motion that we adopt the governing standards and expectations as amended.
So you moved to approve RS-24-116? Councilmember Cobb?
I second that motion.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Councilmember Adams? Is that a yes? Okay.
Can I confirm that's to be effective July 16th? Not immediately?
Yes, to be effective July 16th.
Councilmember Cobb? And the motion is... Is, one, two, three, four, five, six to one. Motion carries. Public hearing. Madam Secretary.
PH 24-023, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Raymond Hamden on behalf of Rayham LLC, Series 108, Case Number DA 2403, to amend the corporate limits of the City of Colleen, Bell County, Texas by disannexing approximately five acres out of the WH Bruce Survey Abstract Number 1296, being locally addressed as 13365 FM 2484, Salado, Texas, declaring said land to no longer be a part of the City of Colleen. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the corporate limits of the City of Colleen, Bell County, Texas, to disannex approximately five acres out of the WH Bruce Survey Abstract 1296, being generally located on the south side of FM 2484, west of the intersection with Tress Jack Road, declaring said land to no longer be a part of said city, declaring said land and present and future inhabitants of said land to not be entitled to any of the rights and privileges of citizens of the city, and to not be bound by the acts and ordinances of the city, providing for a severability clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a savings clause, providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council staff went over the slides last week. Would you like for them to go back over the slides? With that being said, we'll hold, invite the applicant if he or she would like to speak. You don't have to, but if you would like to. All right, now we will hold a public hearing. Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion to approve PH-24-023? Councilmember Boyd?
Make a motion to approve PH-24-023.
Mayor Pro Tim Gonzalez?
One second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Thank you. Councilmember Adams? Is that a yes or no? Is that a yes or a no?
It's a yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. The motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24-024, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance authorizing the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan describing use of funds and authorizing application for and allocation of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program Funds, first of two public hearings. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance authorizing submittal of the 2024-2025 Program Year Annual Action Plan describing the use of funds and authorizing the application for allocation and expenditure of $1,326,229 in Plan Year 2024-2025, Fiscal Year 2025, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and the use of $20,121.73 in reprogrammed CDBG funds and the application for allocation and expenditure of $533,770 in Home Investment Partnership Program Funds, and the use of $97,858.94 in reprogrammed home funds, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Staff went through slides last week. Council, would you like for them to go back through them? Thank you. Now we will hold our public hearing. Public hearing is open.
When considering CDBG funds, I can see that this is very easily and all that going to be somehow funneled into downtown revitalization here and there. I would argue that before any of these funds are doled out, I would like to see a full public display of who's applying and give us a chance to vet who's getting that, because last time the goodie bag was opened up for funding, we had a council member that seemed to get a lot of personal profit off of an applicant that that council member advocated for. I haven't forgotten about it, and there's still some legal question about that. When it comes to all of this CDBG, the reason I'm concerned is the fact that all of this wonderful stuff that we did in the past with all of this federal funding that comes, federal, state, and local funding that comes out of everywhere, it seems like, and I'll use wide latitude with this, friends and family of those behind the scenes get preferential treatment when it comes to the funding, and they get it over and over and over again. Yet the inconvenient fact is, and I said I was going to tie this back to taxes, to the best of my recollection, all, if not most, of the people who received funding on the approval of this council for all of this revitalization in the fourth or fifth version that we're in, have not paid their taxes. So what we're getting here is, our tax money is a gift to others, but they don't feel that they have to pay their taxes. Case in point, the Crown Jewel, the downtown, the comedy club, that, sorry, there's nothing funny about that, they're not paying their taxes, and they're looking to sell the building or whatever their plan is this week, a certain favorite photography studio downtown, way behind on taxes. So how about, before we open up the goodie bag, let's see who's getting in line first to see who's getting the funds and for what, and give us a chance to find out who the connections are. Because that's what it always boils down to with this funding. Whoever applies and whoever signs up for the funding and how they're connected, sorry, I just, I don't like this game played anymore. You want to talk about transparency, that's a word that the Madam Mayor loves to use, but I don't think you know the meaning of the word. Let's have it out, let's air out all the laundry and see who is getting public funds for private use. Because I'll be damned if I'm just going to keep throwing good money after bad to businesses downtown that are barely profitable and not paying their fair share of taxes. I don't care what the grant's for. And as previously mentioned, case in point, that all that little shell game and the three-card money table, we have members who are on record who personally profited from that little scheme. No more. I dare you. Let's, your reelection and your oath and, oh, I'm thankful to be the mayor elected by Jesus and all that, once again, you kept throwing around the word transparency, openness, communication. Let's have it.
Mister, I'm gonna call on you, Ms. McNair, because I got comments still.
Good evening, once again. So, there's a lot of different things going on here with this CBDG and everything, and it's quite confusing when you go through it, and you see all these little slides. I'm not really certain on how this is happening, so here's a question for you. Is that, out of the 800, on the CBG funds, the public service funds of $198,934.35, right? If you look at that slide, the total amount of being spent throughout that slide is $823,705.58. But we're spending, now, is what we're spending to administer or spend that money? We got to spend more money to spend that money. So the administration of spending that $800,000, we have to spend another $265,245.80 to spend that money. So I'm wondering how, you know, where's the justification of spending all that money to spend all the other money? Regardless of where it's coming from, whether it's federal dollars or whatever, we all pay that, that $35 trillion debt our country has. So I'm questioning that. I already got the explanation of the "we" funds, or the $168,000 is not even being spent, so that's been, you know, been taken off the thing there. With code enforcement, we got, we're getting two code enforcement officers, one at $58,000, one at $61,000. Now that's, those are just, you know, top dollars. I'm not being actually super specific, so don't use your fact checker against me to make, you know, I'm just saying this is the total amount. So it comes out to about, if we break that down to hourly wage, it's like $30 an hour, $28 an hour, $30 an hour, but the website says that these people make $13 an hour. So, but there was no pay raise for these people on record that I can find. So I'm just wondering if that's, you know, benefits or whatnot according to these two new jobs coming up, why is it advertised at $13 an hour for a code enforcer versus $30 an hour? When did those, when did that change come about? I can't find it in the city record. So I'm just a little confused with that. You know, the home funds, we're spending $53,000 to spend the $533,000. Just wondering why it's costing so much money to spend so much money? So I'm, you know, I'm a little lost with all this stuff. So, and I know I'm not going to get an answer, because nobody ever answers me. So I ask questions and no one ever gives me an answer. So it's kind of futile. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and we do answer you. Ms. McNair, would you please come and answer Mr. Price, and also tax, talk about the taxes? But that's okay, but it'll go on record that she did answer his questions.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you so much. So as far as the tax dollars, these are federal tax dollars, these are not local tax dollars. So the City of Colleen, the state of Texas, Texas do not award these funds, these are entitlements, so the federal government itself, they just go through their formula based on population, based on what they decide their budget is going to be, and they, across the country, states, local jurisdictions, and some tribal nations all receive this money. It's not anything that we collect here locally. The talk about the downtown revitalization, I think that that had to do with ARPA funding. That is not block grant funding. We don't have any awards, nor did we receive applications for downtown revitalization. And to follow up with that, every application that was submitted is in the tables, it's in the packet with the presentation. So everyone who did apply, we did put that information there. The agency, the point of contact, their proposed use, what they asked for, and what the CDAC then decided to recommend to this council for their award. As far as the administration, local staff, whoever receives these entitlements, so local staff, state jurisdictions, tribal jurisdictions, the local folks who administer the program are the first line of oversight on behalf of the federal government. So they give this money to allow the staff who pretty much specialize in things of federal compliance, environmental, they, we do environmental reviews to make sure that if something is being constructed with these federal dollars, that the land is safe. We submit that to HUD and work closely with them to make sure that we are complying. If not, we go back and do mitigation. Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Sierra, they go out and they do interviews with anyone that's working on the site to make sure that prevailing wage, again, a federal regulation, is being adhered to. We do these meetings where there's annual public meetings, public notices, preparing annual plans, preparing capers, which is just an overview of what you accomplished for that particular year. And coming up next year, we'll be preparing a five-year consolidated plan. So there's a lot of work that goes into what looks like just these two public hearings, and it's ongoing every year. We offer technical assistance to the awardees, we provide assistance to people who think they want to apply for this money. So all of that goes into making sure that the staff that we have administering the program, they actually do work on this hands-on. The CD staff is community development, it's 100%. This $265,000 that we give for admin is not just for staff, we may use it to provide sometimes some meals for our CDAC, and I don't want to go on and on, but I, if, I believe you get the gist of, you know, where I'm coming from, and this is only a fraction of what it costs the city to run this program.
Any questions, Council?
The code, I'm sorry, may I?
Oh, yes, ma'am, please.
The code enforcement salary, that is, if one is assuming that what is presented, this $58,000 and $61,000 is just salary, there's salary and operating costs built into that as well, so it's not completely accurate, or accurate, I should say, I don't want to be defensive or anything, but that someone is getting paid $30 an hour, but to confirm the hourly rate, I would suggest, or I could check with Mrs. Barker or Mr. Revel, because code enforcement is under development services.
Thank you so much. And also, I just want to go on the record that no council member here profit. I didn't profit anything. I don't own a business, and I didn't profit anything. And it's so easy to slander a person's name, because everybody like...
Point of order, point of order.
Mr. Fernino, Mr. Fernino, leave the chamber now. Leave the net chamber now.
Point of order.
Please put him out now.
You need to go.
You need to go. You need to go.
I truly apologize for that. Like I was saying, it's easy to assassinate someone character and slander somebody's name just because we can agree to disagree, but to act in that manner is very unacceptable. I'm not offended. This is what this council go through, and the city staff just totally disrespect, and then they wonder why we sit here and just listen. So I apologize on behalf of the city council and also the staff of that negative behavior. If there is not any more questions?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McNair, if you can explain, because I know a breakdown, I know it's in the slide for everyone to see, that HUD actually restricts or limits a certain percentage of the total funding, and your administrative cost is at the maximum of what they allow. And also is, if you didn't, could that admin money be put anyplace else in those percentages? If you could explain that as well.
So HUD does restrict the maximum amount allowed to be, that is allowed to be used for administration for block grant at 15%, for home, it's at 10%. Those amounts could be reduced if the PJ participating jurisdiction so desired, but they would have to make up that cost themselves typically out of a general fund or another source of funding that is available to them. However, as far as public service, there's, that's a ceiling. So you cannot take and reduce your administrative allotment or set aside and then say, well, we want to give 20 or even 30% to public service, that's just not allowable.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the funding that's being allocated or proposed is hitting its limit based on what the committee recommended.
Yes.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Solomon, sorry, Councilmember Board before you. Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you guys will just bear with me for a quick moment. Madam Mayor, in relation to the outburst, you said that we're not offended, but there are individuals who watch.
I said, I'm not offended.
Yes, ma'am, you're not offended.
Because he directed it toward me.
Yes, ma'am. But we do have citizens that are also offended. And my concern is us continuing to have these, these meetings with these outbursts that are so well calculated that they are sustained through, through their waves and on the internet. So my recommendation, when we have the out of control to where we're cursing, that we work to shut that down even quicker, because it's not productive for this business meeting. This is government business. We wouldn't behave this way in a church, a courthouse, anywhere else. This is a city business meeting. Thank you.
Well, I do agree with you, Councilmember Board, and I think the police officers moved as fast as they could to try to escort him out. I think the problem was that he was just saying he had left some items behind, and they were right on, on spot, but he said he left some items behind, and he kept going backwards and forward, looking at the seats, trying to look for something that gave him that extra time to say some more profanity toward us. And I don't know the legal ramifications to touch them or whatever, but he was going. But I think he had to resist going for them to take a more, I don't want to say aggressive approach, but another approach to escort him out. So if I missed something, I apologize. Mr. K, could you have any feedback on that? Because they, they were right on top of it.
You're correct with everything that you just said.
Okay, because they were right. When I said go, they moved toward it, chief moved down. So there's no law that says we can ban them from the council chamber, so I don't like it, no one likes the attacks, but you're right, that's a calculated plan that has happened at every meeting, and I will say this again for the record, they're gearing up again for the district election. So don't be shocked or appalled if they come even more aggressive. With that being said, Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say to Ms. McNair, thank you, and you and your staff, you're doing an excellent job, along with the other departments throughout the city. We have a wonderful, wonderful staff, and I just want to say thank you for doing what you do and that presentation that you made last week, in spite of everything that we are hearing. Thank you. Thank you and your staff.
Thank you. And the one last thing I just wanted you to say, Ms. McNair, one of the things that was stated, it came across as if the individuals that were selected to receive the grant, as if there is some backdoor, we're behind the scene manipulating who gets the grants. And one of the particular ones was friends and families, where they work with our vulnerable population. Could you please just quickly and snapshot the process, how they're vetted, to ensure that our staff and the individuals that are looking at the application are not doing anything unethical?
Mr. Fredericks is still here. He is the chair for the Community Development Action Committee, and I will just speak briefly. You could come up, Mr. Fredericks. That this committee, they do, from the very beginning, fill out paperwork to state any boards or committees that they sit on for transparency and it's on record, Mr. Fredericks himself had to recuse himself from the evaluation and advisement on a funding award for a particular applicant, and that was all on record, that he did do that, and he stepped away from the discussion. So that cannot happen without any input. I'm not sure where one would come up with any evidence for those type of allegations, because I hadn't heard from anyone on this council regarding who's applied, what they apply for, what are we going to do. It is a public meeting, so anyone who wants to come, they are allowed to come. They can come to our community meetings, we have two of those, and then CDAC, they hold, it was two meetings to do the evaluation, those are open to the public as well, if you want to further elaborate.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Johnny Frederick, and I chair the Community Development Advisory Committee. I did recuse myself, because I'm a member of the board of the Greater Colleen Community Clinic, so I did not participate in that portion of the discussion, but we had 10 members on that committee, and they're a very diverse group. They have interests all over when it comes to helping homeless, helping the lower-income folks, whether it be housing, whether it be healthcare, whether it be food, whether it be any of those things. And we get a copy of the board of directors of every organization that files for application for funding. So, and I look through all of those to see who I know on there. There's not a city council person's name on any of them, not on any of them. And there's not a lot of people that I knew personally on some of them. But it's a very fair process, we allow the applicants to come in, we give them 15 minutes to do a presentation on what they're asking money for, we then give them the opportunity to answer questions that the board may have, and then we move on to the next one. When we're all done, we sit and discuss about the different levels of funding that were requested and the smaller, much smaller amount of money we have to recommend to you. So not everyone gets everything they ask for. A lot of times, some people get nothing. That's just the way the process has to work, because we have much more requests for funding than we have funds available. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the process you may have. It's a very clear and easy process. We do have the applications ahead of time, and they are open to the public. Anybody that wishes to know anything or look at the applications is more than welcome to.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say one more thing, as far as, it wasn't even just to Mr. Fredericks to disclose during those evaluations, a part of the application process is that the applicant must submit a roster of their board members, so we can ourselves maybe determine if there's a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Truly, thank you both. Councilmember Sagard?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to echo what Mr. Solomon was saying. You know, you guys do fantastic work, staff, and also Mr. Frederick, the committee. And I know sometimes it's difficult, because you only got so much of funds, and you got a lot of people wanting to do it, and so not everybody's going to get what they ask, but I think every year, you know, you guys do a fantastic job. And then I also want to thank our staff for answering the questions that our previous citizen came up and asked, and so I think you answered everything, and so thank you for doing that, and we appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you. Mr. Kegel?
One last question. The starting salary for, or hourly pay for code enforcement officers, $18.96, but what you saw in the slide, and it clearly listed it, was one officer in operations, so it's not just salary.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, one of the things that both Ms. McNair and the staff and Mr. Frederick are leaving out to address the questions is, transparency, is that they set up meetings to allow, she mentioned community meetings, but what's that for? Is for people to come out to actually provide input and determine the priorities of how the funding is done. And I think, as long as we keep reminding folks, you can't, to come to those meetings and you can kind of have some input on the priorities that this committee is going to recommend back to this council.
Thank you. Once again, thank you both, and I truly apologize that this happened while you were up here presenting to us. It is unacceptable.
Thank you.
But thank you all for your professionalism.
Thank you.
With that being said, Councilmember Alvarez. Oh, do we have our public hearing? Oh, I got closed, public hearing closed. All that happened then, whoo, wow. With that being said, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Sagard for that. Public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to approve PH-24-024? Oh, you have some more questions?
I just had something for the, for the rate of good.
Oh, yes, sir. Please, please, sir.
This was brought up several times about the city council getting a raise. Prior to myself getting elected in 2022, the voters did vote to provide this council with a raise from $3.30 a day to $8.30 a day. So we are thankful to the voters for that. The city of Colleen council members get $250 a month. Lastly, I wanted to also iterate that, you know, we get a lot of residents and citizen feedback, and we appreciate that, but sometimes what we get is, and I know this, because I've been a resident of Colleen my entire life, is that you feel that, you know, we're up here, whether you're a group of five, or 10, or 15, that you're not being listened to. Well, we are responsible for 159,000 other people, so we cannot bend to the will of four, or five, or 10, or 15 people. We have to do what we believe is in the greatest interest of 159,000 people, not just four, or five, or 10. So something just to keep in mind, food for thought. Thank you. With that, I would move to adjourn.
Can we give a second to that motion?
I second your vote.
No, that's, Mr. Kegel is going to tell you why.
That's, we have to have two public hearings, and so there'll be another public hearing later before we vote.
Yes. That's incorrect down here. Yeah, he corrected that. All right, we got a motion by Councilmember Alvarez, and I don't know who did.
A second.
And Councilmember Adams, you came alive on that one. You said second it.
Excellent, Council.
Oh, was it Councilmember Cobb? Well, who, who do you have, Madam Secretary? This is for the record, official records.
I have Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Cobb.
Oh, okay, then. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no?
Yes.
Yes. No, we got to go to another meeting. Meeting adjourned. Yo, we have one more meeting, if you want to hang around.